Sorry, I didn't give you heads up this evening. We ready? Thank you ma'am. I'd like to call to order this evening, September 4th, 2014, at 7:01, a public hearing. The purpose of the public hearing this evening is for citizens to comment. Item A, Bill 2014-20, Ordinance Number 842, An Ordinance to Change the Zoning of Certain Property in the City of Fairview, Tennessee, Located at 7062 City Center Way, Owned by Karen Durski, As shown on the Fairview Geological Listing of Assessment Role Map 42, Parcel 173, One acre, From RS40 to the Town Center Overlay District. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this matter this evening, on this property? Please approach the podium. Thank you.
Evening, Governor, Mayor, and the other commissioners. My name is John Rose, and I just wanted to have a chance- To bring some points of interest to the commission to consider before making the final decision on this. Not that I'm against it, I just, I'm always one to follow the regulations that we have here and we've set forth in our subdivision regs and zoning. When it talks about the zoning change to a TCOD and MSMU, the MSMU in our Article 4, in our regulations, it says establishments of districts, but it doesn't, it doesn't give an actual definition of that designation. It continues on and talks about the MS, or the MSMU designation, or the TCMU designation, which is Town Center Mixed Use District. The MSMU is the Main Street Mixed Use District, so there's a little confusion there. The City Center Plan was an overlay, and it was a specific use plan that was made up for that area. And it was, to my recollection of reading the ordinance, it was a PUD, an overlay PUD, or an RPUD. If that's true, then this portion of it should go back through the Planning Commission for review, whether, that it fits with that plan. The master plan for the city center. Unfortunately, I didn't make the Planning Commission meeting in June, when it came before the Planning Commission. And as I reviewed the tape on that, the representative for the owner, who's going to purchase the property, was not asked any questions, what are you going to do with the property, is there a plan? It was just to change the zoning. So, my point is, is that there's a possibility, and it should be checked with the codes director and with the city attorney, the proper procedure for this, before you actually agree to change the zoning. Again, I am not against this. I just happened to be at the park one day, helping out volunteering, and the lady that's going to have this coffee shop there explain what she's going to do, and I'm all for it. But I just want to make sure, just make sure that we follow the correct procedure, and that we don't skip any steps. Because there's one section in our codes that's, I'm not going to go through all these details and paragraphs and whatever, but there's a part in here that talks about, "The properties located within the designated TCOD may be rezoned only in conjunction with an RPUD or NRPUD overlay district. A proposed base zoning district in its corresponding RPUD or NAPUD overlay shall be approved only upon a finding by the Board of Commissioners that both are in general accordance with the Town Center Concept Plan." So I just want to make sure that's followed. And then it further goes in there, basically, and says that the procedure, you go back to, I think it's Chapter 8. Chapter 8 talks about PUDs. PUDs have to go through the Planning Commission. So, this is a point of interest that I'm bringing up. I'm all for the zoning change, just want to make sure that the procedure's followed properly. Thank you.
Would there be anyone else this evening that would be speaking on this parcel? Is that, hear from the owners? Are the people that are wanting to rezone, they're here? Are there representatives for this parcel this evening? Thank you. If there be no one else, we'll move on to B, Bill 2014-21, Ordinance Number 843, An Ordinance to Change the Zoning of Certain Property in the City of Fairview, Located at 7061 City Center Way, Owned by John A. Harrison, As shown on the Geological Listing, Assessment Role Map 42, Parcel 172, From RS40 to TCOD MSMU. Is there anyone this evening that would be speaking on this parcel?
It's the other same thing.
Is that part of the first meeting, or do we adjourn the first meeting and open it back up? Isn't that on the agenda for the regular meeting?
Would there be any citizen that would like to speak this evening on this parcel? If there be no more discussion, I'll ask for a motion for adjournment of the public hearing.
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing adjourned. I need a pen. Yeah, I got it under, thank you.
Here, come back.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Board of Commissioners meeting, September 4th, 2014, at 7:09. Those who would, please join us in the prayer and the pledge.
Let us pray, please. Most gracious heaven and father, we indeed thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings of life. We thank you for the soldiers in each branch of service that protect our freedom. We thank you for this board tonight. Lord, give them the direction to proceed with the best interests of our cities. These things I ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under one law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Next item on the agenda is the approval of tonight's agenda.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. I would like to make a deletion of 8C due to Labor Day, the park board did not meet. They will be meeting on Monday, the 8th. So I'll delete that item. Would there be any other additions or deletions this evening?
Your honor, I'd like to ask-
Your honor.
I'm sorry.
Your honor.
Madam mayor, Commissioner Vice Mayor Johnson's running a little bit late, so I'd ask if it gets to that point that we defer 8A down to, make it 8F.
Any other additions or deletions this evening?
Mayor, wasn't there something that the city attorney wanted us to discuss tonight, having to do with the ratification of our part on the library?
That's correct. I have the interlocal agreement between Williamson County and the city of Fairview for the building of the addition to the library. I've read it, I have no real objections to any part of it. It, I think fairly and accurately states the agreement for the city to provide $90,200, not more than $90,250 for the construction of the new addition to the library. And I'd ask the board, if they would, to add this, so that we can act on it. The county budget committee acted on it on the second. They approved it, they're going to act on the document itself on September 8th. And from what I can get from the county attorney, they want to proceed as soon as possible after that to get in the bids, hopefully by the end of October now, nobody can guarantee that. But if we don't act on it until our next meeting, it might hold up the procurement of a contract to do the addition. And I'd also add that this has been discussed many times by the board in this agreement. Fairly and actively represents what I remember the board agreeing to, or tentatively agreeing to. And I'd ask that you add it as item, I guess, 8F.
Okay. We're going to add it as G after what was asked as far as Mr. Johnson's arrival. So we'll have interlocal discuss and or take action on interlocal agreement with the county for expansion of the Fairview Library. Any other additions or deletions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, moving on, citizens' comments. This evening, we have John Cherry. Please approach the podium. Welcome.
Thank you, mayor. I just wanted to take a couple of minutes here to talk about Nature Fest. It's coming up on the 13th. It's always the second Saturday in September that we have this event. This is our 30th annual Nature Fest, so this is going to be a really big one. Our theme is the best of Nature Fest. So we're bringing back some of the things that we've done in the past, like pony rides and things like that. Of course, we're bringing back the ever-popular hayrides. People, this year, the hayrides will be going into the, into the back part of the park. That people, a lot of people don't get to see most of this park, because it's 722 acres. Which, by the way, a lot of people, I keep saying this over and over again, so I'm sorry to repeat myself, but the Fairview Bowie Park, this Bowie Nature Park, 722 acres, is almost the same size as the New York Central Park, which is 843 acres, if you Google that. It's really quite something. It's the largest park in Williamson County. And there's trails there for mountain bikes, horses, for runners, for people that want to walk, walk their dog. I mean, it's just, it is loaded with lots of features. There's six lakes, there is places for picnicking, shelters, there's outdoor theater, there's a nature center, there's a nice playground that the community came together and built that raised, I think we raised $150,000 in three or four months to buy the materials for. The same architect that designed that playground also did Tinkerbell in Franklin and the Red Caboose in Bellevue. It's quite a wonderful park. It's our crown jewel. And this is an opportunity that the chamber gets to show off this great park that we have. There's going to be live music, we're going to have two stages this year. Not only the pine tree stage, but there'll be an acoustic stage that will feature some things like Walden's puddle will be here, show an animal show. There's going to be another, kind of a mini choir fest, if you will. The high school, the middle school choir will be singing. So we know that'll bring out all their parents and grandparents as well. There'll be, we'll have a return of Mercy Stone, which was a big hit last year. Lane Johnson and the Jingle Jammers, the Bluegrass Junction. David Langley, if y'all may see him singing out there at Hickory Home. The Jocelyn Hollow, that's a band that's out from Westmead. The Mike Hinckley, some of you know who that is. Macy Ann Huffines. On the Ladybug Stage, we have some exciting stuff. We have a magician, Sean Hughes. We have a gourmet camp chef, Rick Martinez. We have Storytime. We have a contortionist. We have a falconer. We have a fellow that's going to actually show a live falcon. We have, of course, the outdoor fishing and casting event at the lake. We have an event called Meet the Reptiles inside the nature center. We have a farm animal petting zoo. And History Village is going to be moved this year out between the nature center and the playground there. So it's going to be kind of more in the middle of all the action this time, instead of far away from the activities. We're going to have lots and lots of food. There's going to be probably 10 to 12 food vendors. The, one of the nice features we'll have this year is the Nashville Predators will be here, passing out about 100 free tickets to their, one of their preseason games. We have plenty of mascots coming, including Smokey the Bear. There'll be plenty of contests for people to get involved in. The nature photo contest, a canned goods contest, a baked goods contest, or fruit pies and quick breads. There's the Boy Scout Troop 297 will have a fish fry. That ought to be really popular. There is, I could go on and on and on with this, but I don't want to take up too much time. So we really appreciate the support of the city on this. They're doing lots to help us get ready for this. The JROTC is also helping us with gate and traffic, parking. We've got a ton of volunteers this year that have helped make this a successful event, more so than we've had in the past. We've got more sponsors than we've had in the past. And we're just very grateful for all of the support that we've had this year. And I can't tell you how grateful we are. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you very much.
Oh, by the way, I forgot one important thing. There's also a 5K race, early that morning, from starting at 8 o'clock, that benefits the Donakay Bledsoe, I can't think, it's the scholarship fund. That's right. And so that will be inside the park. They've got a trail designed for that. Parking for that will be at France, so that we don't have a logistics problem with the vendors getting in that morning. So the, what's that? 7 o'clock registration, thank you very much, for the race. And any vendors that, we have 105 vendor booths, by the way. Last year, we had 60, so just to tell you how big this is going to be. The National Guard's bringing back their rock climbing wall. And we're just, just can't tell you how excited we are about this. Thank you. That's next, on Saturday, the 13th, Nature Fest from 10 to 4. And the race starts at 8:00 in the morning. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Sounds like a great day in the park. There be no other citizens' comments this evening. We'll move on to item number four, which is awards and recognition. And tonight, we have a very special presentation. Williamson County is on a roll with a Be Nice campaign. We'd like to share with you just a short snippet of some of the children of our community and what they think about the Be Nice campaign that started in Fairview and is launching around the world.
My name is Tyler McKinney, and I'm in the 4th grade. What Be Nice means to me is to like, treat others the way you want to be treated. We play soccer at recess. I wasn't getting the ball very, the ball very much, and so my friend, he gave me the ball. When someone's nice to me, it makes me feel happy, and like, feel like they like me. If someone's not, not nice to me, it makes me feel down, and like, I've done something wrong, or they don't really like me. If you're nice, it makes them say fun and easy for everyone to get along. Be nice, Westwood Elementary.
My name is Perry Donegan, and I go to Fairview Elementary School. And I'm in 5th grade. To be nice means to like, help people when they need help, or, and like, being positive. Like, I try to be friends with the new people that come into our school. When I do something nice to someone else, it makes me feel good. When I really needed a pencil at my school, I asked my friend, and he gave it to me. To be nice means to be positive and help others do stuff. Be nice, Fairview Elementary.
I am Aiden Houston, and I'm an 8th grader at Fairview Middle School. Be nice means to me is to have a kind attitude and look for opportunities to help others. A nice thing that I did for someone else is I offered a seat to someone because they want to sit by their best batting class. It makes me feel very proud, because it makes their day, and it makes them feel better. A part of Be Nice at Fairview Middle is including everyone, no matter what their talents or weaknesses are. Be nice, Falcons.
I'm Rebecca McCarroll. I go to Fairview High School, and I am a junior. I feel like Be Nice is always the quickest way in our school. Like, if we just mention Be Nice, it kind of just like pops in someone's head, like, yeah, it should be nice. Once the Be Nice campaign came out, we started getting like, seeker admirer type thing, Twitter accounts, like FHS compliments. I saw one about my friend, and I was in study hall with her, and I was like, did you see this? Like, someone wrote something about you, and like, her face just brightened up. And like, at that moment, like, I just, I just loved the campaign even more, because it just, if it makes my friends happy, I'm happy. I think it's going to work even better as the years come on, because that's going to be how people are introduced to our school. Be nice, Fairview High School.
Excellent. Thank you. Evening, we would like to take it a step further. Yesterday, amongst Williamson County, we were presented the Be Nice Fairview, and this placard will be somewhere in City Hall. Also, we have launched the campaign throughout Williamson County, and they did a proclamation yesterday across Williamson County at the Franklin Theater. And they asked all of the mayors and councils to present and to make a proclamation. So this evening, I would like to do so. The City of Fairview Proclamation. Hereas, the City of Fairview has a tradition of southern hospitality and graciousness, and values the culture of kindness that was born out of the Be Nice movement created by Fairview High School students and staff, and adopted by all of the Williamson County students and staff. Whereas Fairview and Williamson County can serve to be examples of what cities and counties can aspire to through individuals simply being nice and doing good, and by giving where there is a need. Whereas our city and its citizens, businesses, public servants, continue their efforts of being kind and encouraging, have joined to promote a campaign of niceness that celebrates and strengthens the spirit of Williamson County, and the City of Fairview, and all of those who live, work, and play here. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Beverly, Toddie, Mayor of Fairview, by virtue of authority vested in me by the City of Fairview, Mayor, do I hereby proclaim the month of September 2014, Be Nice Month, in the City of Fairview, and encourage all Fairview residents, businesses, and community organizations and leaders to join in the Be Nice way of life. In witness thereof, I have unto set my hand and cause the seal of the city to be affixed to this fourth day of September 2014. At this time, I would like to honor Ms. Dr. Oyer. She is very instrumental in the Be Nice campaign and the conception of the idea. If you would, please join us, if you have a word that you would like to share. And most of all, I as not only the mayor, but as a parent of a student of Fairview High School when this was birthed, and being able to stand and see the differences of our youth and the opportunities of us to just be nice, I want to thank you for that effort, and you being a forthcoming leader in our community.
Thank you. Thank you for the kind words as well. On behalf of the three other schools and Fairview High School, I just want to say thank you. I believe so strongly that the schools are who we are, and our futures are as bright as they are because of the community that we live in, and the community that we're helping strengthen. I have been asked repeatedly if we see a difference as the school by doing this. And my favorite story about it comes from a group of students being asked that question, because I can think anything I want, but it's their school, and so it's powerful to hear their answer. And their response was that it was, that we, they feel like we have a kinder school. They feel like when we have on our T-shirts, which are for sale, if anybody wants to buy one, just a little plug for that. And all of the schools have their own Be Nice shirts now. We used to be the only one, but everybody has one. And all of the schools are using it as a fundraiser, so just a little plug for the schools there. But the students were very clear that they do feel like it has created an opportunity for kindness. And one of the things that they said that I do think matters very much is, it gives students a way to kind of jokingly stand up to someone who is not being as kind, which I think is powerful for our students to learn how to do in the face of something that's difficult, have a way to address that without having to be strong and mighty in their own way, in their own voice. They can just look up and say, hey, let's be nice. So, thank you so much for the continued support of the city. This is a fine day, and certainly a fine day in the history of Fairview High School to have a county-wide proclamation that was birthed there, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Oyer, can I get you to share a story with me? The other day, I was at the literacy council-
Yes, sir.
-when Dr. Looney was talking about the program and everything else. And a lot of people may not be aware of what happened on Fairview's first football game of the season with Chedon County. Could you elaborate on that?
Thank you, yes, sir. Thank you for giving me the chance to brag on our student body. The Chedon County game was an away football game. It was a tough game. Dr. Looney put me on the spot that day and said, we creamed them, didn't we? And I said, well, sir, we won. So it was good to be able to say that. But the best part of that evening, I think, came when our student body, unprovoked by any adult, uninvited by any adult, looked at each other and said, let's stick around after this- after this game and clean up." So they stayed and cleaned up Cheatham County Stadium. And, and again, I just can't say it enough, they were not asked to do that by any adult. The next day, Coach Hughes and several other adults were asked by Cheatham County people, "What in the world did you guys do to make that happen?" And we were so proud to be able to say, "We didn't have anything to do with it. We were as surprised as you were." There's nothing but pride when you see a group of teenagers do that. So thank you for giving me the chance to publicly brag about that.
Thank you. I'd like to present this.
Sure.
And I know she has requested if the commissioners would like to gather around.
Thank you.
This is for you.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Moving forward, we have this evening, oh, let me back up. Do we have any other awards or recognitions from the staff?
Not right now.
Okay. Didn't, didn't want to miss that. Anyone from the board?
No ma'am.
Okay. Moving on, we have public announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners, the usual emissions testing Monday and Tuesday from 7:30 to noon. This Saturday, September 6th, we do have a rabies clinic here at City Hall from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. It's $10 per rabies shot and this is a great event, in my opinion. I think this is very beneficial to all of the city of Fairview to have our pets rabies shots. So, I'd encourage everybody to come out for this event. Thank you, ma'am.
Any other public announcements from the board? Moving on, item number 6, approval of the minutes. The approval of the minutes from the August 21st, 2014 Board of Commissioners meeting.
Moved to approve.
Second. We have first and second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, Cherry. Item number 7A, old business. Second and final reading of Bill 2014-20, ordinance number 842, an ordinance to change the zoning of certain property to the city of Fairview, in the city of Fairview, Tennessee, located at 7062 City Center Way, owned by Karen Durksky, as shown on the geological listing of assessment roll 40, map 42, parcel 173, from RS 40 to Town Center Overlay District, Main Street Mixed Use.
Moved to approve for discussion.
We have a motion? Second. Discussion?
Mr. Hummer, I'd have to listen to Mr. Row here. What kind of comments do you have on the questions that he was asking?
We do have, this is a proper procedure, but it's about the Main Street Mixed Use at the base zone and then of course, the Town Center Overlay is, is an overlay.
Is your microphone on, sir? Microphone, please. Thank you.
It was a, it was appropriately processed there. It has a base zone of the, which is the Main Street Mixed Use and then the overlay is the Town Center Overlay District. Okay. That's all I have. Just want to make sure we're doing it the right way with the proper code.
Mr. Cherry, are you representing? Do you already have a contract?
We are negotiating somebody right now, which is not executed.
And, the only thing I always get concerned about when we rezone something and not know exactly what's going in, so I was just trying to see if we had any ideals of what they're going to use the property for.
I can't disclose who it is, but I can tell you the category.
Okay.
Would that help you?
Yeah, that would.
It's medical.
Okay. Good enough.
Is that okay? It's not itching stone, it'll happen.
Well, yeah, I really.
But, you know, I, I wouldn't want to represent anybody that wouldn't, you know, be a good fit for the area.
Yeah, that's my biggest concern with the Town Center is making sure it is conducive to what
Sure.
we are and around here.
Right. If I didn't live here, I wouldn't care, but I, but I do care.
I know.
So, just for clarity, is a master development plan required to rezone property in this district?
Not for any particular parcel like these.
Is a master development plan required for this PUD?
It's not, we would get a, just rezone the property, I'm sorry.
Rezoning the property, just, all it does is set up the classification. We, we will get a development plan on what Mr. Cherry is talking about to see, and that will go before the planning commission. So there will be approving the plan.
So in our codes, does it require a master development plan before it is rezoned?
The intention of the, no ma'am, it doesn't. The intention of the master development plan is for a larger piece of property that's going to have multi-tenants, multi-uses and those kind of things. With individual properties, it's not required.
Is it required because this is a PUD?
Because it's an overlay district.
Because it's a planned urban development.
Right. No, it just, it's just that the Town Center Overlay District has additional requirements to it rather than other zoning classifications. So there will be, including the design review, so there'll be an extensive amount of regulation or scrutiny of these developments. So, you know, we're, the, the idea is for them to be appropriate in the, for the city center overlay and the Main Street.
So are, are you 100% sure that before this PUD has any rezoning in it, that it is not necessary to have a master development plan according to our codes?
I'm, I'm sure. I'm sure that on the, on this size piece of property, you know, it's, it's just, it's not necessary to have it just for the zoning. Before the development is approved, it'll have to, they'll, they'll essentially do a master development plan.
But it's not required before the zoning according to our codes?
Not for this individual piece of property, not to my knowledge, just not.
All those, any other discussion?
Just since I'm getting here late, could someone, could you repeat the motion? Is it just a motion to approve?
And earlier, Ron had spoke and was questioning the overlay and if it was zoned correctly and so there was some discussion about that. It was in the citizen comments, just to
In public hearing.
In public hearing.
Larry, the, the zoning of this piece of property can't be held up waiting on a development plan, correct?
Well, it, it can be, but it, it shouldn't be because that plan's going to have to come back before the planning commission and of course, once you approve, that, when that plan is, is approved, if it's a, if it's a PUD, then that PUD's going to have to come back to the board.
But the, the rezoning of this property is
Rezoning of the property was not required.
Correct. Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item B, second and final reading of Bill 2014-21, ordinance number 843, an ordinance to change the zoning of certain property in the city of Fairview, located 7061 City Center Way, owned by John Harrison, shown in geological map roll 42, parcel 172, from RS 40 to Town Center Overlay District, Main Street Mixed Use.
Moved to approve.
That counts.
First and second. Discussion?
Nothing other than the same questions that we had on the, on the first one. Is everything correct on that as far as?
Yes, it is.
Any other discussion?
And there is a contract on this one, correct?
Any other discussion? And we do have, just for the record, representatives of the property are present. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 8A, discuss and/or take action on recommendations from the Board of Commission Grant Workshop. Mr. Johnson?
We had a really good workshop here the other day. We had a couple of members from TDOT and a representative from the MPO. We have an opportunity to take out a, a GAN loan to cover these costs, but I feel that there is a way that we can do it without that, but I think we need to possibly look at the loan as a safety net. We are looking at $465,314 that the federal government has allocated to the state, which has in turn made it available to us with our share being $94,118 in our match. There is $30,000 left to be allocated and we have requested that from the state and they are going to allocate those funds as well to the project. We will be doing a section of Cumberland Drive from Highway 100 to Chester Road and Cox Pike from Northwest Highway to Dice Lamplie. Just as recently as today, yesterday, I spoke with County Commissioner Ricky Jones and he had me get back in contact with City Manager Hall about contacting Eddie Hood, who is the County Highway Superintendent for Williamson County. We are meeting him Tuesday at 11:30.
Yes, sir.
Tuesday at 11:30 to go over some other sections that we are working on, interlocal agreement with them with, on taking this project on Cox Pike down a little bit further so it would get into the entrance of the Pine Crest subdivision, along with a section on Henry Drive.
Henry Drive, Dice Lamplie, and New Hope Road.
And this is something that we are working with the county on, that they will actually do this work for us and bill us only for their cost. So it's something that's going to be very, very beneficial to the city if we can make this happen. The, the actual note that First Bank has given us the ability to, to have with them, I think is something that is, like we said earlier, a safety net. And I spoke with Ms. Donna Brooks after the workshop the other day and she thinks even if we could do it on our own based on the figures that Tom told us were in, the street aid fund of 130 something thousand, it would be something that we can take out at an interest rate of 3.25 and there was an origination fee of $1,200 and of course, the interest would only accrue if we exercised that right to borrow that money. We, the total project, I think, could be divided into four payments that whomever we let the bid to, I feel that the state assured us that these things, if they were properly submitted, they would get us our money back within 30 days. And to me, that's a tremendous turnaround. We can write into the bid documents how we will allow to be billed for the project and what terms we will make payment on. That being said, if we planned this outright and set a total amount not to exceed for the project itself and spaced out the billing cycle, we could pay our portion out to the state and be refunded before the contractor turns in another bill. So I do feel very confident we could do this without taking out the loan at all. But, if the board decides that it's the right thing to do, then I think that it is, there's, there's, it's not going to cost us any money to do it unless we exercise it. And then it's going to be a miniscule cost based on what the service it is going to provide us in the end.
Thank you. Anyone else that was at the workshop would like to make comments?
I would just like to thank you, Mayor, for actually putting the workshop together and bringing those key people together. I think it really opened our eyes to the possibilities and just got some clarity on the grants that we had. It wasn't just, you know, this one. We, we got a whole lot of clarity and a good direction. And I really felt good about the meeting and the direction that we can take in getting this project done. One of my big concerns in the last meeting was, you know, actually taking out a loan, but I spent some time with John Blade after that meeting. He did explain to me, made me feel a lot better and so it gave me the ideal going into the workshop that this was doable, that this could be a benefit for the city. And I, I really believe that the Vice Mayor is right in the direction of, there's potential when they said we could do our payments quarterly, we may not even have to, you know, take out any money or pay it back before. So, there's a lot of hope and not to lose this money would be huge and I think it would be win-win for the citizens. I hate we have to do it this way, but it is what it is. So I think we have the opportunity to, you know, get some much-needed paving and improvements on our roads and I think we're definitely going in the right direction.
Okay. Anyone else? Commissioner Sutton, did you want to share anything about the workshop?
I just thought it was a great workshop. I've been looking at it for a long time and I talked to John Blade prior to that and I'll have to say that John in the bank here is willing to do whatever it takes to assist us in getting this city moving forward with, with, with these type of loans that we need that is there if you need it. If you don't need it, it's not going to cost you. All we're doing is paying them back. He's, he's told us he will do exactly whatever he needs to do as soon as he gets the billing in, that he will immediately transfer those funds over and immediately submit it to the state of Tennessee. So there won't be a long process and a turnaround as far as getting that money paid back from the state of Tennessee. So, we can't ask for a whole lot more than that from an institution. And the financing part on it is, is, is excellent for what we're going to be doing with it. So I'm excited about it. I don't, Wayne, you probably tell us better than anybody, when was the last time we built a road in this city?
Last November.
Built a whole new road?
No, not a whole new road. This was
I think it was Chester and it was high long ago.
Quite a while ago, but the paving, the only paving that's been done in four years other than the one that goes into the park is the one on King Road that accessed the high school, which I'm very proud of because it was in bad, bad shape and it accessed so many of our students. And it was just, it made me feel better that they had a safer way to get to school.
And it, it's a cooperation not only from the state of Tennessee, but who was the other lady that was here?
Metropolitan Planning Organization, Ms. Emerson.
And she was here and they're, they're anxious to help us. This money is already designated from the federal government, state government to, to come into play and they're, they're going to guide us through the whole process to make sure we do it in a timely manner and is very efficient in, in this loan process and getting the work done.
Great. Thank you. Anything from staff?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. This is a, a grant that y'all have been working on since 2011. I'd like to recommend going forward with it. This will be the, a, a big asset to our city. It accesses about 70% of our population on these two roads. I think it'll be a big safety factor and I want to say one, one more thing, that during the estimating process, I will get a separate estimate for restriping from Highway 100 to meet up to where they're going to at least have the striping all the way complete. And I think that'll be key also to a safer road. Thank you. Frank.
Mr. Hubner?
I just want to add that I thought we had a great meeting and to reiterate what Commissioner Sutton has said, that the state and the MPO people are, are taking the attitude of, "Let's get it done and we'll do, they'll help us in any way we can." are taking the attitude of let's get it done, and we'll do, they'll help us in any way we can, which I think is really an excellent approach. A lot of times it's left, we, a lot of times cities feel like they're out on their own, and if you either sink or swim, but I think they're actually proactive in helping us, which I think is in everybody's best interest. So I think it's, I think it's a great opportunity to work with the state and to, and also when Manager Hall and I met with them, they've even made some suggestions for future road improvement grants. So we're excited about getting this done.
Great. Any other comments?
Mayor, if I might, I thought it was a really good meeting. There was a lot of good information that came out from people that actually are in charge of getting this done. That impresses me because you're dealing with the people that are actually going to turn this around, not what I think I can do. The second thing that I'd like to pass along is it was a simple matter of figures, and I like to deal with things that are simple, I guess, because I'm simple-minded. But what it's going to afford the city, the opportunity to do, as I heard the numbers, is do approximately $500,000 worth of road with the city paying $100,000 for it. And to me, that's a good deal. If somebody offered me that, I'd take that deal if I had to borrow the money. And I probably wouldn't get it at 3.25%, but I'd still do it.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Would you like me to read the resolution?
I'd like to know what the mayor-
For? Resolution for what?
The anticipation note.
We don't have a recommendation for that, and that's not an agenda item? What was your anticipation?
No, part of our-
We didn't make a recommendation?
When did you prepare the resolution?
It was on the 21st-
It was before the last meeting.
Yeah, it was the 21st agenda.
Right.
That it was on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda tonight.
No, it's not on the agenda tonight.
We have time because it doesn't expire till 30th, so.
Did you say something?
Yes, ma'am, I'd like to hear what you think. You were there.
Oh, absolutely. I believe bringing people to the table, as Mr. Cantrell said, bringing the people to the table that are doing the work and can follow through and can also help us go to where we're wanting to go is always the wisest thing. So I appreciate everybody's cooperation. Did miss and understand your medical, but I think everybody at the table came and was ready to discuss, and that's how progress happens. So, great, any other discussion?
Well, I do worry, I know we have some time, but if, how, is this, once we approve it, that's it? It's just one?
It's just a resolution.
So we don't have to go back?
Okay.
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure because I really would like to move forward. It's a shame we didn't get it put on the agenda.
Could you confirm that that would be on the second meeting? Any other discussion?
Commissioner Carroll started talking about the rest of the grant workshop. And Safe Routes to School was discussed, and that project has been granted an 18-month extension. And they have cut the project down a little bit due to higher estimates, and it will be from Dogwood into the middle school instead of from Grammar. The multi-motor connector grant sidewalks on Old Franklin Road is in the process of right-of-way acquisitions, which could be difficult if people aren't willing to give up their front yard. It has a federal funding of $175,235 with a local match of $43,809.
That's on Old Franklin Road?
Correct. And lastly, the Roadscapes grant is the three-quarter mile stretch of Fairview Boulevard between Old Nashville Road and Fernvale Road. It is a grant of federal funds $91,266 with a city match of $17,245 for the beautification of the four lanes and the cloverleaf at Highway 96. And we are in the process of finding whether or not the Tree Bank funds can be used to pay for that, even though this is trees and bushes and stuff, because the state owns the property and not the city. So that is the rest of my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, and the beautification, just to footnote that, that is, and we will accolade Mr. Dan Cubitt, if anyone remembers, back in the early 2000s. He was very involved, and as he was speaking about the beautification, I just wanted to tie that together in case you paid attention, back that long ago, of the beautification of those, the four lanes. It's the same project, and we look forward to moving forward on that. We are in the design stage. There are engineering, engineers that are provided by the state, no cost to us, that are drawing up the designs, and we are working on that. And as we move forward, we'll keep you informed. Any other discussion?
Just from my own understanding, Mayor, so the recommendation from the grant workshop is-
We did not have a recommendation.
Do not have one?
No, sir. Moving on to B, discuss?
Go with it.
We're just discussion at this point?
I think the suggestion was we put it on the next meeting's agenda to approve and or take action on the recommendation.
The resolution.
The resolution that's going to be presented.
Okay.
There'll be no action. We'll move on to 8B, discuss and or take action on Bill 2014-04, ordinance number 844.
It's an ordinance to amend the City of Fairview, Tennessee Municipal Code Title 13, Property Maintenance regs, Chapter 4, Tree Planting and Protection, Section 13409, Community Tree Plan.
Mr. Cantrell?
What I did in that ordinance was to attempt to carry out what the board had directed in the, in effect, took the Section 13409, which relates to the Community Tree Plan and Tree Bank. And what I did was split that into two funds, one be Tree Bank Account 1, the second would be Tree Bank Account 2. And I discussed this with the CFO before I started this to see if it would cause him a problem to have two Tree Bank accounts, one and two. He assured me that it would not, and as a matter of fact, he said it'd be a simple matter to do. And what I did with Tree Bank Account 1, to keep the faith that the board directed me to do with the original purpose of the directive, to be spent on trees only, and I expanded that a little bit. I left the trees in there for purchase of trees only, and I added to that for Tree Bank Account 1 and its limitation, plants to go with, to accompany the trees. I'm paraphrasing now, but to accompany the trees. If some ground cover or something that you need when you get finished, that would, the trees and the ground cover would be bought out of Tree Bank Account 1. Tree Bank Account 2, I gave you the maximum flexibility that I could give you in there that, that talked about that you were wanting. When we created Tree Bank Account 2, the funds in this account are to be used for items, parentheses, except the procurement of trees and ground cover, which is covered in Account 1. So we excluded that from Account 2. But we went on in Account 2 to say items which may be purchased from Bank Account 2 were such as fencing, fence posts, chemicals to treat trees, funds to pay someone, a professional, if you needed, if the trees got attacked by whatever virus or vermin or whatever, that they could remove them and be paid for out of that account. I also provided in there that the board could, if a project became, it's not in here, because I did say including but not limited to, that they thought was valuable to, or was needed on property that belongs to the city, that that be paid from Account 2. I provided a mechanism in there for replenishing the accounts. I said that as future money comes into the Tree Bank accounts, that it be divided 50% between Account 1 and Account 2, so those accounts would be replenished. I also gave the flexibility since, since Tree Bank Account Number 2 hasn't been created yet, and there probably wouldn't be any funds immediately available for Account 2, that you could transfer, the board can transfer funds from Account 1 to Account 2 to accomplish a purpose that you want to accomplish. And then as the funds come in, future funds until that amount that had been transferred from Account 1 to Account 2, 100% of those funds would go to Account 1 until it's totally replenished, and then you revert to the half to Bank, Tree Bank Account 1 and half to Tree Bank Account 2. And I hope that I understood what the directive was. At least that was my intent, and that's what I thought you were saying. However, if you want to amend that, I can amend it between the first reading and the second reading as long as it doesn't change the purpose of the ordinance, so we wouldn't have to go to Account 1. I'm sorry, back to reading number 1.
The appendix, item D, that references in this, what does that say? I don't have-
I just left that in there so that if the board wants to form a plan, that it would be labeled as D2 and attached to this ordinance. The board hasn't done one yet, and they're not required to. I just left that in there so you could, if something came in and they wanted to have a specific plan for that, the board could adopt that and it would be attached to the ordinance as D2.
But it doesn't exist?
Not at this time.
And where does it reference the fee schedule that was in the original one?
That's not in this ordinance. I think the fee schedule-
How will we know what to charge?
That, I think this is, it's not addressed in this ordinance. It may be addressed somewhere else, but I wasn't asked to find that. It may be in the file already, but I'm-
So if someone has assessed this ordinance, 844, how will there be any type of assessment of fees if it's not addressed?
Well, it would be done the same way. Do you have a fee schedule in your, in your file?
Yes, I do. It's in the design for the manual, retired review.
All right, they put it in the retired review manual, which is part of-
It's addressed in the other ordinance. My question is, should it be addressed in this one, I guess?
That's, that's up to the board. If you want me to, to do that, I, with Mr. Frank, we can attach that. I think what you're telling me now is it's in the subdivision regulations.
Yes, it is.
Or development contracts.
Development contracts, yes.
I'm sorry.
Okay, in the first ordinance, it's addressed in there. It talks about appendix, and I would just assume that if you had that in-
Well, any other portion?
In Ordinance 1, it would be referenced in Ordinance 2.
Okay, I've got your question now, the-
Yes, sir.
The only thing that was addressed in this particular thing here was 13409. The remaining chapters of that ordinance remain unchanged. So that's where, that's where that is, yes.
So would it be referenced in this at all, or are you saying that amendment is all that's taken place in 844?
Yeah, 13409 was the only thing that was addressed in this ordinance. The remaining portion of the, of the chapters, the five or six other sections, remain unchanged. So that's where that's come from.
Are you finished, Mayor?
Yep.
Okay. When I proposed this at the last meeting, what I was trying to do was to come up with a compromise because it seemed like we were heading down one of those roads that was going to split everybody into two camps, and that's really not very productive. So we did that anyway. We split into two camps. I've operated under a rule for the seven years that I've been serving with Mr. Cantrell, and if it takes him longer than two minutes to explain the ordinance to me, then I don't want any part of it. It's too complicated to go on the books and will be forever trying to interpret it. So my motion is that we defer this item indefinitely until we so want to bring it back up again that there's no pressing need to change anything right now, and there's no pressing need to build a fence or do anything. So that's my motion, is that we just drop it.
Second. Discussion?
Yes, ma'am, I would like to just add some stuff that came out of the Tree Board Tuesday night.
I have recommendations printed, prepared, but you're welcome to share your comments.
Oh, yeah, I just, the Chairman Debbie Rainey urged that we not change this ordinance at all, period. She said that there was a whole lot of work that went in to that, and the committee that studied this before we drew up the ordinance the first time. She was not totally opposed to changes in the future, but she thinks that they ought to be part of anything so they can have some input here with us. Mr. Berkeley, our city arborist, disagreed 100% Larry with your interpretation of landscaping. He says that he was on the committee when they, when they drew it up, and that was their full intent, what the definition of landscaping is and should be. That has nothing to do with this tonight. We're moving to defer it, but I just wanted to make that known, is that what was discussed Tuesday night at that meeting.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item C was removed. Item D, discuss and or take action from Tree Board recommendations. I was presented by the Secretary of the Tree Board for the motion and recommendation that selected orchard trees be purchased. I make a motion with the recommendation from the Tree Board that selected orchard, that's a hard word to say, trees are purchased using the Tree Bank funds and donated to the Community Garden as part of the 2015 Arbor Day Observance. Say observation, observance. The number and kind of trees were discussed. That is a motion and a recommendation from the Tree Board. Second. Discussion?
Yes, ma'am. Wouldn't we have the same problem donating the trees to Williamson County property that we would have putting the trees on state property? I have no objection to doing it other than answering that question. If we, if it's illegal to put them on state property because the ordinance says City of Fairview property, then it would be illegal to put them on Williamson County property for the same reason.
You got a point. You're right.
Yep.
That's, that's-
Because purchasing is one thing, planting is another, but if the ordinance intent is to purchase and plant on, then you split there.
Well, I don't think it would do us much good to purchase them and not plan to plant them somewhere.
No, but if you're planting them on Williamson County property, it violates your ordinance unless you want to change it.
We are, if I could, Mayor, the, the Tree Board in talking with, I guess, Jack and the Community Garden aspect, they are supposedly, we need to get it verified, Mr. Hall, I think, is going to go out there and check it for certain, he may already have. They are wanting to put them in the city right-of-way along King Road. So that should clarify it, but we need to verify where that right-of-way is.
Yeah, I just, I don't have any problem with us doing it. I just want to make sure we're not doing one thing this way and one thing the next.
Okay, ma'am. Would you like to amend the motion that it's on?
Well, I just think we need to defer it until we get an answer as to whether or not they're going to plant, where they're going to plant the trees.
I have, I have already met with Jack Cannon, and we have stepped off the right-of-way, and he thinks that they will work out fine there. The thing I would like is Larry's opinion, since it is on their property, but it is in our service right-of-way. Do we still have the right to plant them in our service right-of-way?
If it's your street, you do. If it's-
It is our street.
Okay, then you've got a right to plant anything that won't be a safety hazard.
Okay. We'll re-step off the exact, make sure before I commit to purchasing the trees that we are within the distance of the right-of-way.
Mike Berkeley was going to have a site visit, and then he was actually going to come back to us with what type and how many, I guess, of each particular species. So deferring it tonight is not an issue, I don't think, at all.
Were they planning on, planning, I guess, I guess there's no way they were going to do the 12th day?
Arbor Day was in-
The Arbor Day, okay.
April?
Yes, ma'am, April.
Okay. Do you make a motion for you to defer?
I'll make a motion that we adopt that, that's fine, as long as we ensure we put them on city property.
Well, we have, we have a motion and a second, so if that is confirmed-
Right.
Would there be any other discussion?
It's my only amendment, that we confirm it's on city property.
How many and how much is it going to cost?
How many and how much is it going to cost? You talking about 10, 20, a thousand?
No, sir. I, I think he's talking about possibly eight trees and I don't think fruit trees are as expensive as other trees are.
Which could for sure say less than 20.
I'd, I'd say, you know, less than $400, I would.
That's fine, ma'am, I'm just, I didn't want to leave it open ended.
Yeah. But I, I will find all of that out.
Amen with a cap.
If I could, I'd make a amendment, Mayor, the minute two that we go at this time with this approval, no more than 20 trees. Is that correct, Wayne? You thinking eight?
You said eight.
Or put the dollar cap.
No, more than 20.
Let's just put a dollar cap on it to 400 and I think we'll be in good shape.
I think the dollar cap is going to be, it could be a little bit more than that. I mean, I just want to get a number out there.
Okay. What was your amendment?
That we amended to no more than 20 trees.
That's a lot of trees, though.
Motion, amended motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion?
My motion was just to have a number out there for it, so it wouldn't be open ended.
I agree.
If they need more trees, they can come back and we'll give them some more, I don't care.
Any discussion about the amendment of capping at no more than 20 trees? Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any other discussion about the original motion to approve using tree bank fund money for selected orchard trees to be donated, put on city ride property for the 2015 Arbor Day observance? Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item E, discuss and/or take action on planning commission recommendation on rezoning application for the property located Highway 96 North, parcel 22, I'm sorry, map 22, parcel 150 from RS 40 to CG, Big Little Investments. Is there someone here this evening to represent this property? Could staff confirm that they were duly notified?
No, I believe we need to be present.
No, Mayor, this was passed by the planning commission.
Okay.
And all this is for, is for the board to direct me to prepare the documents.
What are the wishes of the board?
To approve.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Discussion?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to just make it known that when Larry does get this drawn up, they will not be present at the next meeting, either of the owners, they made me aware of that today, but their engineer will be here to represent them.
As long as they've got an agent here, that's fine. But they'll have to have somebody here. The reason they don't have to have anybody here tonight is this doesn't directly affect them, it's just your.
Right, this is, this is internal stuff.
Right, as long as they've got an agent here, that's fine.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And item A was moved to F. F then became G. G is now where we are. Everybody follow that? Bingo! All right, discuss and/or take action on the interlocal agreement between Williamson County and the city of Fairview for the shared cost of the expansion of the Fairview Library.
To approve.
Second.
We have first and second and in discussion, I will ask, we voted on 50%. Why is that not the verbiage in this particular interlocal agreement? Can you give me clarity, please?
I think that, that at one of the meetings, the agreement was reached, I don't think it was voted on, but the agreement was reached that the price wouldn't, instead of a percentage, would not exceed $90,250.
That was the original, but then it came back.
The original was less.
No, then it came back with the statement of 50% and then we voted. I'm looking for clarity on that. I believe you're right.
Yeah, I think the final agreement was $90,250.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
And I believe Commissioner Basile made that motion.
Well, it started out that I wasn't happy with the 50% because, and I went through an explanation of why I wasn't happy with the 50%, because we're paying twice. But be it as it is, having the library expansion is more important than arguing over the $2,000, $3,000, whatever it is. In the end, I believe the motion that I made, and the only way I guess to know would be to go back and look, but I believe I said we would pay 50% not to exceed $90,250. So if it came in that our 50% was $88,000, then that's what we should be on the hook for, not for a flat $90,250 or whatever it is.
Because it could come in at 125 and we're still on the hook.
And we're still stopping at $90,250 because we were all concerned, if I, memory serves me right, we were all concerned about, we started out in the $65,000 range, around $130,000, and there was no adequate real explanation ever given on why it went from 130 to 190. And that, that kind of caused us all to sit up and take notice. So we wanted to cap it, but we also, if it turns out that it's only cost $120,000 to do it, we don't want to pay the $90,000 and have the county only pay 30. So I, I don't know how it's exactly written, Larry, you would be the best person to discuss that, but, but I believe Vice Mayor is correct, that my intent was 50% up to $90,250.
Well, in the verbiage, and we just received this today for viewing, so, you know, whether we're prepared or not, but in the wording, not to exceed the 90, does cover the existence. But I do believe we had a conversation about 50 and we had a vote about 50 and I believe that should reflect in this and not to exceed 90 in that sentence of repayment and construction costs. Because at that point, we don't have the verbiage that we did lastly vote on, which was 50% not to exceed the $90,000. And that would be my alteration of asking a edit on that particular section number three.
Is that the county's document, Mayor?
That was my question next, is where did the document get prepared and has the county already seen this document?
The county commission has not seen it. The committee, their, their finance committee acted on it on September 2nd. And yes, it was shipped over to me from the county attorney. My memory was $90,250, but I mean, we can always go back to them and say 50% not to exceed that. And if they approve that, then we can, we can write it on here, not to exceed that. And if they accept it, fine. If they don't, then they can come back to us. But if, if we can, can write that in here and, and pass it, it might avoid missing the bidding schedule that they're on, because the entire commission's going to act on it on September 8th.
Well, I, I think, I make a motion, Mayor, that we amend it, pin and ink change to it, to add the 50% clause up to $90,250.
Second, and that would be item three, where it says repayment of construction costs, to read the city agrees to pay the county in an amount of 50% of construction costs not to exceed $90,250 to be paid in continuance.
I think it actually appears in here in two places.
Okay.
But we, we can change it and write it in there and send it back to them and see what they, see what they do.
Well, we're prepared to send it to them as us voting tonight, so that edit would be the change and you'd be prepared to send it to them.
Yes, and I'll, I'll put that, I'll put that in.
We wouldn't have any delays.
I'll, I'll put that in the one, I'll sit here and, and change that, just all I've got to do is add 50% not to exceed.
Okay, discussion?
Mr. Hall has something.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to point of information more than anything else, that I have been in discussion with Keith Feinstein, who's the construction director for the county. And that is the way he understands it, is the $90,250. If the bid comes in less, it's 50%. He understands it that way.
But we'll still need to add that to the documents, so if they sign off on it, we've got it.
Then he won't be surprised.
No, it's clarity. In a contract, clarity is always a good thing. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the amendment of the change?
Aye.
Any opposed? All those in favor of the, how did it read? All those in favor in the acceptance and the moving forward on the interlocal agreement?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Larry. We're at the end. City manager? Comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor, Board of Commissioners, two or three things. One of the things, we've recently gone under a TOSHA investigation and we had no violations. We just got the letter on that, I think, a couple days ago. But the guys in the police department and the guys out in the garage, she was very pleased at a garage that looked that good. So they did a lot of hard work out there to get it ready for the inspection. The other thing I'd like to report on is the delinquent property taxes. We've collected $14,768.89. The outstanding for last year that's still left on is $22,191. So, and Brandy, I believe, have y'all sent out your other notice? We've sent out a second notice. So they're being very proactive in trying to collect our back taxes for us. So that's a great thing in my opinion. The next thing I'd like to say is I was very pleased with the workshop. It helps when we go to see these people.
Chief, I just, I could hear you back there and couldn't hear him, I'm sorry.
It, it helps us when we go to see these people trying to promote our community. And Frank, he just, he's an automatic with them. You know, he, he knows their, what they're thinking and I sit back and listen and I'm learning, but I am very impressed with the way that those people handled theirself in this meeting the other day. It's like the meeting we had with them, we automatically became friends. So I think it's a good thing for the future. But they ask us if we had any future projects that we had in mind. They're going to let us know what comes available for us. So I think it's, it's a great thing for our community. I'd love to see every road in this town repaved, widened when we could, but, you know, that's the way we can get it done. You know, and all we got to do is finance it for a little bit. It's a business decision. And I think in the future, that's a, a good thing for us to be looking into. That's all I have tonight. Thanks for the meeting tonight. Very good.
Thank you. Any staff comments this evening? Good evening.
Good evening. Our monthly stats for last month, we had 100, 709 calls, we had 19 accidents, we had three injury accidents, one was a double fatality. And last month, we made nine drug arrests, five marijuana, two heroin, and then we had the meth lab Sunday. I would like to commend the fire department on the accident and the meth lab, they're there, they help us out tremendously. And my guys are working hard and doing a great job. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor. We ran 66 calls last month, that's about average for us. And Chief Harris left out one important part about the meth lab, it was basic good police work that discovered it. And the credit goes to that officer that was out there on the road. Again, that was just basic good police work. He left, left out complimenting the police department and I want to make sure we don't forget them. Thank you.
Thank you. Other staff this evening? Other departments?
Keith's got it.
Point, point shoot.
Just a reminder, Bowie Jubilee, September 6th, from 11 to 2. Lane Johnson and General Jammers will be playing and picking party after. And we also have the pea shelling storytelling with Jerry Carey, Monday, September 8th and the 15th, from 6 to 8:30 PM.
Thank you.
So I got it. Any questions?
Have we got our logs yet?
I'm waiting on a phone call.
All right.
They're, they're supposed to be on the truck and waiting on to get them out there.
Thank you. Mr. Hubner.
Okay, in the codes department, we issued 11 permits for a total value of 1.2 million. Five houses in August, 48 inspections, seven COs, five violations and one failure to comply. Also would like to add that our revenue projections for basically all permits is a total of $60,200 for the whole year. We've now, at this point, collected $16,855, which is 28% of that. Two months is 17% of the year. So we are ahead in our revenue collection at this point. That's all I have.
Mr., could I ask in the future, when you give us that figure, if you could compare it to a year past?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments this evening? Comments from the commissioners? Commissioner Basile?
Nothing for me, Mayor.
Commissioner Carroll?
Yes, I have a few things. First of all, I would just like to thank Dr. Oriar for coming out, the Fairview High School kids for coming together, coming up with the idea of being nice. I don't know how many of you got to hear the story. I know that I have a couple postings of the videos where the high school students did the be nice video when they did the launch last year. And I have the Williamson County also on my site and I've shared it with a few Fairview sites also. So go on and watch it. It's a great story of, you know, her experience in the airport, then coming back to a meeting with the kids and just sharing her experience, because they were talking about bullying and some problems they were having in the school. She shared that experience and they just came up with, you know, just be nice, it's simple. And so it, to watch it just go from where it did and seeing it all across the county and all the schools, it makes me so proud of our kids. And they, it's just not a T-shirt and it's just not a slogan. They really have made it a way of life and I hope to see it go viral. Our mayor did a great job representing Fairview. If you catch the video, you'll get to see her in our beautiful Bowie Park. And, you know, it was just a great lunch party and it was a great time and I'm just very proud of our kids and I can't say it enough. And that just shows you what we can do with great minds coming together, working together. We saw it in the workshop. We saw when we could sit down with the right people and just talk about the needs, what we need to do. And, you know, I really do appreciate you doing it and everybody that could come. I know it's hard, workshops in the middle of the day, the people can't always see, you know, leave work to come see the workshops, but it really was a step in the right direction. We have a great community, we have wonderful kids. And I just really think they, we, they have led and we need to follow their example.
That's all, Mayor. Thank you. Commissioner Sutton?
No, I just want to reiterate what the chief said, both chiefs said. I didn't hear you from back there, but it's what you said up here. The meth bust the other day, I want to make, you correct me if I'm wrong about this, those two people are not from Fairview. They're not citizens of Fairview. And the officer that got that and discovered it, it was a car that was covered with a tarp. So it's impossible to know that that was a car that they had been, had a BOLO about. And then the fire, I thought the whole motel was on fire because everybody was out there. And I thought everybody responded real well to it and I'm proud of both departments. And people don't understand what goes into discovering a meth lab, cleaning a meth lab. Forty years ago, when they first started with it, the guys that were going in on them and busting the meth labs and going in to check them out, they didn't have the protection that they have now, they didn't have the knowledge. Most of those people that were doing it 40 years ago died with lung cancer. So that just tells you what it does to. So that just tells you what it does to the community and the people around you, and there's children involved and everything, this and these things. So it's so important that we have the good police department and the good fire department, and the good task force that works with us on that, because they put a lot of effort into it, and they lost a lot of people in the very beginning because of it. So I'm proud of all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Chiefs, both of you did a great job. We were in Atlanta over the weekend, Sunday, going to the Braves game, and started getting phone calls trying to ask me what's going on. I'm like, I'm not there, I don't know what's going on. So then we get back to the hotel, and it makes national news. So it was, but good point there, they, they were reporting that, that it was Fairview residents, and I believe that they may have been from Dixon County, but may have been staying there for a couple of weeks or whatnot. And lastly, I would like to apologize for my tardiness this evening. I was in Clarksville at the Clarksville Montgomery County Home Builders Association. I was with them all afternoon, so I apologize for being late. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your attention this evening, and I do hope that you shared in the videos and look forward to the march ahead of be nice, Fairview. Have a motion for adjournment, please? All in favor? Good evening. Thank you for your attention.